This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call to meeting this order of the meeting in Stratford Zoning Commission for February the 24th at 7:03 PM. For the everyone's information, right now, we have all members present except for Commissioner Vacola, Commissioner Manos, alternate member will sit in until such time as he is able to join us. These meetings being held in conjunction with in accordance with the governor's ruling regarding remote meetings. So we will begin first item of the agenda I will call is 6520 through 6540 Main Street, 100 Orno Place, 111 Leslie Street, 109 Charlotte Street. Petition of Parkway Plaza Stratford LLC seeking site plan review and special case to establish a full-service restaurant/coffee shop with outdoor dining and a drive-through in a CNC zone. Petitioners, are you present? Who's the lead on this?
Yes.
Mr. Rosati?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's Robert Rosati. How are you?
Okay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Abansky, everyone present? My name is Robert Rosati. I'm an attorney here in Stratford with my father, Thomas Rosati. Our office is at 3241 Main Street. I'm also a resident of Stratford. I'm here tonight representing Parkway Plaza Stratford LLC, which is made up of Martin and Robert Spriglio. They are the applicant here tonight seeking site plan review and special case approval to establish a full-service restaurant/coffee shop with a drive-through and outdoor dining in the CNC district on Main Street, 6520, 6540 Main Street, also Orno Place, 111 Leslie Street, and 109 Charlotte Street. This is all adjacent properties next door to the Spriglios Riders Landing and 6580 properties, which I believe you, everyone is familiar with. All these properties, including the existing Riders Landing, are in the CNC district. I think you recall in 2018, as our written statement says, and as Jay Abansky's comments say, you all recall how we got text amendments and zone change approval from this commission in 2018 as the first step that leads us to tonight or this first phase of the development. Right now, these properties are single-family homes, which are going to be torn down for the development. The properties are then going to be consolidated along with the streets, and those streets have been abandoned. Orno Place, Leslie Street, and 109 Charlotte Street, they have been abandoned. There's town council minutes from February 8, 2021. Mr. Abansky, I can submit them now to you or email them to you, those minutes, just to make them part of the record, however way you want to handle it. Rob and our architect-
Yeah, I would say you can reference them, Attorney. This is Jay Abansky, Attorney Rosati. You can reference them and then email them to me or show them once I give one of your teammates presenter status.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. So again, so the roads have been abandoned, so everything's going to be consolidated into one parcel for this first phase. When Rob and Kieran and our architects starts to speak, you'll see what I'm talking about with the site plan. It's all submitted as part of the application. Again, COVID sort of dictated that we have to switch gears and just start with this first phase, this first building, the coffee shop. Any other buildings that were in the works that are shown on the plans, those are just proposed for future development. We have the opportunity to bring in a national anchor tenant, and it's at this stage that we're going to do that with the first phase of development with this coffee shop. And construction is going to be basically on 6540 Main Street. And it's also important to note that because this is only the first phase, there's going to be no development along the riverfront at this time. So discussion of the riverfront, discussion of public access to the riverfront, that's not part of this first phase. It'll be included in the develop at that time. Of course, we have to satisfy the requirements for public access and developing along the riverfront then, but that's not on the table at this time. Backing up, like you said, on February 8, the town council did vote to abandon the roads, and I have had discussions with Attorney Bruce Jackson that if any deeding is going to be necessary, I'm going to work with him to provide him title work, and we'll accomplish that as part of consolidating these properties. And in addition, we've agreed that we will give access as necessary to the town for any town property in the back. But again, that's for the future phases, but I needed to mention that here tonight as part of the abandonment. The Spriglios, the Spriglio family are major contributors and taxpayers of the town of Stratford. They own real estate and businesses here in Stratford. They are the owners of Lord Chamberlain. They've been Stratford residents and committed to the town of Stratford for many years. They're going to add to that by further investing in this property. They're going to add more tax revenue to the town of Stratford. They're invested and committed to the town of Stratford. This is going to be a gateway property right off of the Merritt Parkway. It's going to be a great asset to the town of Stratford. Like I said, we have a national tenant ready to go into the space. The building and the use fully comply with the CNC requirements of 7.7.1 of our regulations. The proposal fully satisfies the special key criteria of Section 20 of our regulations. We were before ARB on November 2nd of 2020, and they made a favorable recommendation of this plan. That's part of the record. Waterfront Harbor Management recommended that we go forward with this plan on February 1st, 2021. The Planning Commission discussed and recommended the road abandonment on January 19th, 2021. So we have all our ducks in a row before you tonight. This proposal also conforms to the master plan of development, and that's submitted with our written statement, the excerpt that recommends commercial use for this property. Now, we have a great team here tonight that's going to walk you through the application. I'm going to try to stop talking. We have our experts here that are going to demonstrate how we satisfy the CNC and special case requirements, and they're also going to address some of the staff comments. Tonight, we have Robert, Robin Kieran of Phase Zero Design. She's our project architect. Mark Lancor of Dymar Corporation, he's our civil engineer. Bill Kenny is here. He's our landscape architect. And Kermit Hua is our transportation expert engineer. He's here as well. Al Wolfgram here to answer questions. He's another one of our team civil engineers. And Steve Warner is available. He's the property manager of the applicant, if any questions are needed to be answered by Steve. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Robert Kieran, the architect, who's going to walk you through the application.
Great, thank you, Bob. Yeah, Jay, can you, are you able to do the screen share or pass me to take the lead?
Can she get presenter status, Jay, please?
Yes, thank you.
You should have it now, Robin.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Bob, thank you for the introduction. As Bob mentioned, we are submitting for Phase 1 of the overall master plan for Parkway Plaza. And you can see the later phases are grayed out with the irregular shape identified with the dashed line for Phase 1. Phase 1 will include a drive-through coffee shop with outdoor seating with parking directly adjacent to support that use. We're also proposing to include the interior parking field as Phase 1 due to the infrastructure that's required for the coffee shop as well as regrading of the entire site to allow for development. The Ring Road, which will, from the entry, which was prior previously Charlotte Road to Orno Place around Leslie, we'll call this the Ring Road. This is a necessity in Phase 1 to allow for emergency vehicle access as well as direct vehicular access from Riders Landing on the plan left. That was a requirement from our national tenant to have that access. From the very beginning, the Spriglios, the ownership, had asked that we look at the Merritt Parkway for inspiration due to significant history in the area. So we were looking at basically the full length of the Merritt and any direct elements that we can incorporate, specifically shallow arches, art deco design, decorative metal elements, layered facades, and blending of natural and modern design. From the original design inspiration, we went to built environment precedence of how that can be translated to the building facade. So you'll start to see areas or ideas of shallow arches, which can be achieved from wood timber elements, metal roofs, curved metal canopies and accent walls, vertical and horizontal accent wood, and a strong relationship between the buildings and the site design. Equally as important as the building facade is the site design, and we've gone to great lengths to really enhance that for the customer experience with specific accent walkways with stamped concrete, decorative bike racks, benches, and, you know, time, or I guess design-inspired sight lighting. We believe that Parkway Plaza is going to be a great opportunity for place making within Stratford, allowing for, you know, people of all ages to utilize the development, and it also allows for opportunities to add site accents such as wood and decorative metal. For the later phases of the development, we'll have specific areas that we're going to be proposing place making experiences. The proposed material palette for the coffee shop, but will be continual through the entire master plan, is wood timber framing, clapboard siding, standing seam metal roof, stone veneer, wood siding accents with white composite trim, along with decorative metal elements and metal canopies. Again, as important as the building materials, the site elements are of equal importance. Looking at decorative sight lighting that has shallow arches, the decorative metal, banners that provide opportunities to highlight what's going on in the community with decorative benches, decorative metal benches, and trash receptacles. Looking at a bird's eye view of the proposed site, we're proposing a sidewalk that runs parallel to Main Street, which is, I believe, a recommendation or part of the executive summary from the 2017 study. We want to enhance the user experience, so we're proposing some undulating paths along the sidewalk that allow for users to sit along a bench and that are, will not impede pedestrian or cycling along the sidewalk. We're proposing dense landscaping along Main Street to shield the parking but also create visual diversity, and then you can see the building orientation in relation to Main Street. Looking at a site section along Main Street, you can see the building orientation with the outdoor seating in front, the sidewalk with the undulating path with benches, dense landscaping, as well as a very clearly defined entry into Parkway Plaza. This would be a sightline view as you are exiting the Merritt Parkway, the off-ramp that again will be part of the vehicular infrastructure changes to allow for ample entry and exit out of the development. We're proposing a stackstone monumental wall that allows an opportunity for signage as well as areas where we can incorporate design elements inspired from Merritt Parkway, in this case, the art deco wings that can be seen on the James Farm Road Bridge. Looking specifically at the proposed building, it is 2,475 square feet. The building has visibility from 360 degrees, so all elevations are of equal importance. As shown prior, the proposed building materials include a stackstone veneer wall base with lap siding above and a standing seam metal roof with decorative curved dormers. The front elevation, I shouldn't say front, I'm sorry, the elevation in which customers will enter and the drive-through side have decorative elements highlighting those areas with vertical wood siding, metal canopies, and decorative ironwork that is inspired by art deco vines. Looking to a 3D representation of the building, you can see all of those elements along with awnings and the proposed patio at the front facing Main Street. This is approximately 415 square feet, so it can accommodate about 28 users at most. We've added a decorative wood pergola to highlight this area and again, start to blend that modern and natural design element. Also, we've added decorative planters at the front of the building to create that layered facade look. The other side of the building, which is the drive-through side, mimics the front entry with the decorative accents with the vertical wood, metal awning, I'm sorry, metal canopy, and the decorative ironwork. So the facades are balanced. We've added landscape screening from the drive-through to shield the outdoor patio. From there, I'm going to pass it to William Kenny, our landscape architect. Let me just flip to his slides.
Thank you, Robin. Good evening. I'm Bill Kenny. I'm the principal of William Kenny Associates located in Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm a professional landscape architect, and we prepared a detailed planning plan for this project in accordance with the zoning regulations, particularly 12.1, 12.2, dealing with interior parking areas and front landscaping, and also in addition to that, just additional interior planting related to pedestrian areas, pedestrian spaces, and spaces around the proposed building. And Robin did a great job of showing in general what the landscaping is going to look like with all the 3D imagery and modeling that she put together, and what our plan provides with plant sizes. So we are providing the required amount of parking lot trees, one tree for every 10 spaces at the size. We're specing three and a half inch caliber trees, and the trees are tall trees, trees that'll reach a height greater than 30 feet at maturity. And then we also have street trees and a continuous shrub planting along the street, which is primarily evergreen shrubs to help screen the parking, which is at a lower elevation. So that helps that it's lower than North Main Street. As in the interior, we also have some screening around the proposed dumpster area, but we also have accent planting around the building, around the pedestrian sitting area outside of the building, on the west side of the building. Please answer any questions that you might have.
Another question. It's on the landscaping survey or plan? Hearing none. Proceed.
All right. We'll pass it to Mark Lancor, our civil engineer, to talk through infrastructure and grading requirements.
Good evening, commission members. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Continue.
Very much. My name's Mark Lancor. I'm the principal engineer with Dymar located 800 Main Street South in Southbury, Connecticut. And it's with great pleasure that we are before the commission tonight, and respectfully, it's been a long haul, I can say, for the team, but I think what we have before you is a phenomenal project and an opportunity that's going to make Stratford proud. The project before the commission complies first with all aspects of your regulations and zoning standards. Regarding the access and circulation parking, how did we come to that? Well, the site is approximately 6.8 acres. It fronts Main Street with the primary access located along the right-of-way of the recently abandoned Charlotte Street and exists across from Exit 53, the Merritt Parkway service ramps. This is and will continue to be a full signalized intersection with modifications per our initial discussions with the Connecticut DLT. The internal drive network includes a connection to 88 Riders Lane, which is the furthest easterly section along the project, and this has already been required by the national tenant in which the applicant has a contract with. It also includes, the tenant also requires that the access drive from that connection also along the existing abandoned Leslie Street will also be constructed. The internal drive, the internal loop drive network, in addition to the master planning for the future potential building and tenant uses, all have set the framework for the site civil design and elements that are before you. This includes not only the internal circulation, but it includes the pedestrian as well as vehicle circulation for fire protection and deliveries. The layout in terms of the positioning of the entrance obviously is directly aligned along the existing singleized intersection, but the most northerly access or point in which we're leaving the site has been driven by our communications also with the DLT, in which that is now only a right turn out only, so that prevents any kind of conflicts existing along Main Street. Now, when you look at a site plan, grading becomes an extremely important component of every site civil project. And the grading of this site, along with the subsurface site conditions as it relates to the orientation of the buildings, the first floor elevations, ADA accessibility, the parking, these are all essential factors that need to be considered and balanced if the layout is going to be effective, safe, and functional. Under this initial phase, the grade from Main Street to the easterly Loop Road changes approximately nine feet in grade. Now, although that does not seem to be all that dramatic, we need to take into consideration other factors. For example, as we're looking to the other uses on the site, which are the most easterly section of the site, there's an additional 20 feet in dropping grade that goes to 111 Leslie Street, which is the existing house that's situated on that lot. In addition, there's an absolute need to connect Riders Landing, to connect to Riders Landing, which also has a change in grade of about 19 feet from Main Street to that existing parking lot. All of this has to culminate into how you're going to grade the site to make sure that it's effective and functional. So the proposal, which is before the commission, takes into full account what is absolutely necessary to accommodate not just Phase 1, but future phases that address the vision of the applicant. Subsequently, this necessary grading sets the framework for the layout and elevations to utilities and the stormwater management system, which is substantial. Our client is making a substantial investment in this property, not just for the first phase, but its future phasing to be able to market the property so it can succeed. So on the topic of infrastructure, the site will be served by public water from Aquarian Water, which has more than adequate pressure and supply. Public sewer is going to be connected to the existing 30-inch sewer by gravity in Main Street, and then it will be natural gas. Currently, the existing 8-inch water line in Charlotte has to be relocated and reconstructed as the site is being lowered such that the necessary pipe cover will be inadequate, so we have to relocate that line. This line currently services 111 Leslie, and therefore, we need to make that connection in order to sustain that property until such time that the next phase comes forward. The existing electric cable and telephone lines are currently overhead. These lines will now be built underground, including the service of 111 Leslie Street, which will be then located within the northerly Loop Road of the abandoned Leslie Street. The sanitary sewer force main line is also being installed in the northerly Loop Road for a future connection to the most easterly portion of the site. Again, all of this has been taken into consideration and looked into the future so that we do not have to come back and have to rip up and expend dollars and resources that can be planned into the future and connected and made part of the first phase. With regards to drainage, the stormwater management system that has been developed completely complies with the town's stormwater specification and design criteria for a 25-year storm event, the Connecticut DEP's 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual, and the town's MS4 requirement standards. The system involves a series of BMP practices and treatment devices. These include basins with deep sumps, hooded outlets, CDS treatment devices for the removal of sediment particulates, and subsurface infiltration systems for the first flush of rainfall from the impervious areas, which gets to satisfying the Connecticut DEP 2004 Water Quality Manual for recharge volume. The primary location of these systems is noted in- volume the primary location of these systems as noted in and I would say blue but it looks like a bluish green the way it appears on the screen are located within the easterly parking lot and the reason for this network the way it is is because we have to take into full consideration of the entire Loop Road and all the other infrastructure that is involved within all of these within the entire site and the most practical area to house this stormwater treatment basin and stormwater treatment systems is within that parking area because it gives us full flexibility we have the soils to do it and we have the foundation for an effective system so the network takes into consideration how the system relates to grading the area and the servicing of every phase including Phase One and the layout arrangement that's going to be required as we move forward now we've received a report from the town engineer as of yesterday on February 23rd that was forwarded to us we have reviewed that report there is nothing in that report that is of any concern to us he's basically in agreement with the with our findings we also receive documentation from the Connecticut DEP with regards to our stormwater treatment system and they are full agreement with the the way this system has been proposed and they've made one recommendation which we have agreed that it's no issue for us to concede to so with that I am I believe that the way the layout is and the way the system is pulled together it addresses every aspect of the intent of the district and your regulations and respectfully if you have any questions I'm happy to answer them
any questions
yes this is Commissioner Francis
oh Mr. Francis proceeds here
Ms. Manis go ahead ladies first
so Mark I was asking is Kermit on
yes I am
did you want to give a synopsis of your traffic study in correspondence with the DOT
yes we we set out
quickly quickly I have a question about what he was just talking to prior about
before we move on to the next speaker let's Commissioner Francis has a question I'll give you the floor sir
yes so I just wanted to know did you take the recommendation of John Goucher of the over excavation of the system
yes yes fully we're fully in agreement with that
and that's going to reflecting in a new plan or is it in this one
no his recommendation is that as we move forward that when the system gets constructed that we actually in the excavation process will do some subsurface additional testing based on those findings we can make we'll determine what what we need to do go forward so it can be done during the construction process okay
all right thank you
any other questions for Mr. Lankor and we could take more later but anything immediate okay hearing none Mr. Y I believe you wanted to chime in on the traffic situation
yes thank you Chair members of the commission my name is Kermit Hua for right for the record the company name is KWH Enterprise LLC 277 Reservoir Avenue Unit 101 Meriden Connecticut I'm the traffic engineer for the development and prepare the traffic study I'll just go over the main points of the traffic study and respond to some of the comments from the staff of report and then I'll be glad to answer any questions the commission may have we looked at the traffic volume as the existing condition based on 2019 volume so that was just before the pandemic with the normal traffic intensities we collected accounts in spring and summer of 2019 and those counts were also supplemented by a recent year Metro COG study for the Route 110 corridor that contained a 2014 volumes and we used the you know assumed a new traffic annual traffic growth to reuse some of those 2014 volumes so we essentially looked at a 20 I look at a Route 10 corridor all the way from the Orinok intersection and then the southernmost intersection we looked at is the intersection of a river road and the Main Street to our south so that encompass the ramp intersections both northbound and southbound Route 15 and the next step we look at a number of trips to be generated by this development this is the Phase One the full build off build out scenario is Phase Two so for Phase One we are you know I looked at a three peak hours where is the weekday morning the second is weekday afternoon the third is Saturday midday the busiest in other words at the busiest hours of what typical week for Phase One we are looking at the trips from this site 176 for the morning 85 for the afternoon and 173 for the Saturday peak now for the full build out both Phases One and two the respective peak hour volumes are 227 173 and 263 as you can see here especially for the weekday morning peak hour the coffee shop will count for the bulk of the trips from this site I won't go over every intersections just as a representative representative location the main accessing intersection the signalizing intersection of a boot camp and the main site driveway driveway Charlotte Street at the intersection level we are looking at level service D for the intersection for the weekday morning peak hour C for the weekday afternoon peak hour and a B for the Saturday midday peak hour so overall you know without obviously one one component of our proposed offsite improvements is a redesigning the intersection of the main site driveway and Route 110 one reason is because there's existing signal mast amp pole right in writing our driveway so we have to redesign that intersection so essentially you know replace the signal hardware at the intersection and to keep the existing signal phasings and timings of the signal controller and the other thing we are improving offside is there currently is a southbound left turn lane into Charlotte Street the length of that is about 90 feet we are proposing to lengthen that to two about 200 feet within the existing state right away so the benefit of that obviously you know with the additional traffic making left turn after they're going southbound on Route 10 you know they won't be they won't they will have that designated left turn lane instead of a blocking self through traffic on Route 110 so that's the second improvement we went over those two components with DOT staff with including their traffic engineering and OST staff at that point because at the scenario we presented them in 2019 is a full build out scenario and they agree essentially agree with our proposed you know improvements like like I described two components was a signal hardware replacement the two the second with the lengthening the southbound left turn lane so obviously just Phase One of the of the development will be less traffic intensive compared to the original scenario we presented to DOT so as far as offsite traffic impact I personally I personally don't see any major impact from this coffee shop one of the comment from the staff review is public safety I think the advantage of this side is we have a an existing traffic signal that we can tap into it you know we don't have to reinvent a wheel essentially using the same signal phasing and timing and tapping to that it it worked well you know there's not a lot of change in terms of delays and level service after we you know widening the side driveway from the existing Charlotte Street that's pretty much all I have unless the commission have any questions at this point or I can wait till the end of the presentation thank you
okay questions from members on the the traffic portion
I don't this is a Commissioner Francis I don't know if this is actually involving the traffic portion but I did see in some of the comments where there was a I guess there were some worries about a one-way driveway that wasn't wide enough that may obstruct the interest to the restaurant what was that work you show me what that was referring to and and how did you address that concern
Mark could you do that yeah that's a question for Mark Lankor
I think he might be referring to the former Leslie Street is that be correct
it's actually I think it's more of the connection that goes with the queuing for the for the actual coffee shop okay so you know that's a that's an internal internal design element I will say that when we initiated this project with this this tenant they had a prescription of what we had to provide them in order for this to move forward there were a number of reiterations that went back and forth both with that tenant and the design team and this is the design in which they signed on to so the real question has come down to is really what I call is a the pinch point the way that the you come off of the main Loop Road that comes in the main road that comes in you would take a left as you can see in the middle there's the aisle way in the middle here that you would take a left into and at this point there is the ability that it's one way after this point in which now you have a queue lane that goes to the drive up window and then you have a pass through that can go both take a left to go around that queue lane or you can take a right in terms of a two two lane two road two-way access area now the concern was is that this pinch point we have 13 feet and the idea was what happens if that queuing backs all the way up and the concern is that we cause an issue with traffic coming off of the main axis there is no conflict first and foremost there's no conflict with anything with the main road obviously Main Street anybody that takes a left coming off of the main road to get into the coffee shop drive area here has the ability to make two decisions one they can take a right into the parking lot if there was a situation in which we stacked up all the cars they could take a right into the parking lot or they can take a left into the main parking lot of the coffee shop so there is there is the ability to make decisions where there would not be any bottlenecking so that that being the point we also did present an alternative to 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 staff in which we increase the pinch point throat to 20 feet we have no objections of being able to do that to do that I don't know if that can be brought up Robin just to show what we did is there an opportunity to do that
excuse me Jay it's Bob Rosati Mark is referring to the 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 alternative that I emailed to you today I don't know if you got it and I think Robin can put it up on the screen
yes I did receive it earlier today and then address some some of those comments that I had some of them
Mr. Vansky this is Robin Kernan with Phase Zero Design I seem to have lost the connection and I rejoined but could you try like taking the presenter back and then re-initiating to me if I can attempt to do a screen share it seems to be frozen
sure one second here
thank you my apologies
Robin are you still there
yeah I'm still here and I see unfortunately I see my name twice so I'm not sure why that's coming up I met I don't know if the orientation on the screen is the same but I'm at the top left
probably give it to the one with the green telephone as opposed to the gray one
let me see here
thank you my apologies for the technical difficulties
no worries
I I will pull up so this is the current site design that Mr. Lankor is talking about where we have this median projecting out at the one-way directional access to the drive-through and the bypass lane we have a proposed alternate that I can pull up that enhances or expands that the depth there we're currently showing 13 feet the proposed alternate expands it the drive aisle to 20 feet to minimize any stacking but still allowing for ample queuing as well as continued drive aisle to allow for the bypass lane turning down in the former Leslie Street or turning up to go to Riders Landing
so in this scenario there the the right hand I guess it's okay so the left-hand lane is obviously the queuing for the drive-through the right-hand lane you can turn onto Leslie Street to go into Riders Landing or let's just say you're like me and you're extremely impatient and you say there's too many cars here you know what I'm running late already I'm just gonna head out of here and that's what you would use for to get out of the complex
yes that's exactly right or as some people and I know myself I've been in this situation myself in in these locations and if you see that there are that the queuing lane is already stacked up to its capacity you still have the ability to take a left right into the main parking lot and walk in or get your and get what you need to get and then turn around and go back out
okay
and that's and that's the thing you have you have many you have the ability to do you have options here you have the option to go into the parking lot directly walk into the premises do what you have to do and get out you can get into the queuing lane if that's the case you can bypass the queuing lane by going straight through and having the ability to go around it and then back out on the Main Street or you can go into Riders so there's and the other option is is which has not been you can also take a right into the larger parking lot if that was necessary if that's what you wanted to do so it's not like we're gonna have this huge sacking problem here because
it's Bob Rosati again I I think what's important under either scenario you're never gonna have a situation where cars are spilt onto Main Street like
that's what I just want to make sure
other establishments where the drive-through is backed up on the public highway where there the the line of cars is always going to be contained on site regardless of how which alternative you guys like there's never going to be a situation where the cars force you all the way out into Main Street unfortunately we do see that in other establishments that's not the case here
so you can have 11 cars between the window and where they enter the the modification or the the very beginning of that left-hand lane right is that 11 cars I'm saying
you have 11 cars yes
and then more room yeah you would you would have to have an awfully huge line to get all that backed up And then more room bef- yeah, you would, you would have to have an awfully huge line to get all that backed up that far, I'm guessing.
Absolutely. And, and plus, even if you had, even if you added a 12th car that sit around the bump out, you have the ability to just go, uh, the, the car can drive right by it, bypass right around it. So it's not going to, it's not like it's gonna just stop.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Habansky here. Um, I just wanted to add, um, you know, if.
We lost you, Jay.
We lost you, Jay.
I don't think he knows.
Let me tell him.
Jay, can't hear you, Jay. We can't hear you, Jay.
Is there a chat? Can somebody chat?
Yeah.
So just to that point, Mike Henrik, um, if you did, I mean, you haven't said who the person is. You showed a sign of an arrow bred there. I don't know if that's your, uh, your, your tenant, but, um, some of these lines do get long. And, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but what would be the remedy if you did get a 13th car? Are you gonna put some kind of signage that says, you know, no queuing beyond this point? Or is this people's natural tendencies, uh, to not use their heads, um, in blocking? Is, is that, is there, is there a way to maybe notify people? You know, I know you've got a keep-left sign for drive-through. Um, can you put a sign there that says no queuing beyond this point?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, you, you'd like to believe the common sense, people would not block the, the entrance to the left or block, you know, the cars coming back out to the main road again, but people don't know.
You're a hundred percent right. You know, most sane people are gonna make it work and they're not going to do that. Uh, but we can actually, uh, you know, put another sign on underneath, no, no queuing beyond this point.
Right, okay. And then, and then, so when you're, when you're coming around, let's say you're coming around that, that the line is too long, you take a left to head out. There is a way to cut back into the main parking lot by taking another left after the, after you go past the front of the building?
You can. We're not promoting that. Um, you can do that. I suspect somebody may try to do that. The idea is, is that people that are in the queue lane are in the, in the drive-up window. But you have the ability to do that.
Okay, no, there'll be nothing blocking that access. I mean, I, I think it should be the, I think you should be able to. You know, again, you'd have to grant right away to the person.
Yeah, it, it, it happens where, um, a lot of these lanes, they actually merge those two lanes to bypass around and merge it to the one lane to go out. So those are just geometrical changes that we can make and accommodate, and it's done by striping and signage.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's a great layout. It's a great footprint. Um, I think you guys have obviously put a ton of effort and, and brain power into putting this thing together. I think, I think it's, uh, I think you've done a great job all, all, altogether.
Thank you.
Uh, while we're waiting for Jay, so I thi- I thought I heard it was mentioned that the, was the state DOT.
It should be back now.
Oh, okay. It's an imperfect world, folks. What can I say? Uh, the DOT was requiring that, that exit way just till, to, uh, still be there. Actually, at first I was almost gonna say that. I didn't really like that, but now the way you explain it, it makes sense. But was that actually a requirement to allow that secondary egress from the site onto 110?
Yes.
Okay.
You need that relief valve.
Yeah, and obviously we will mark it that it's, uh, right turn only.
Absolutely.
And yield.
And, and we had to go through a number of gyrations with DOT even on the radiuses. Because we, we tested all the radiuses for all the vehicles. They can come in and go out and to make sure that those radiuses were correct. So that was also something that was passed through the DOT.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Savvy, I, I had one quick question.
Proceed, sir.
Uh, it's Mike Henrik again. Uh, you had said the other, the other plan you showed was different. Was the difference in the, in the distance between the bump out and, and the curb to the larger parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that would just allow. So you can't see, I can see your, yeah. So your plan, your original plan has it at what? Okay.
13, 13 feet with a 10-foot, uh, 10-foot island.
That's it.
And then the other one is to actually move the, the area where you see the, uh, uh, the queuing. Yep. So we increased that throat and then moved the queuing down. So that instead of having, I think it was like an, uh, almost a 10-foot green strip there, we now have a five-foot green strip.
I, I think that would make more sense to do the 20-foot. Just one less possibility for, for, uh, congestion.
We have no objections. We've, we've worked this out with the client in advance and, uh, it's really, you know, that's, if that's what works and everybody's, uh, accepts it, we're, we're with you.
Okay, tho- those would be my only two requests on this whole thing would be the 20 feet and maybe a sign that says no queuing beyond this point, but.
Sure, we can do that.
Uh, this is Jay Habansky. I apologize for my technical difficulties and it sounds like part of my concern sounds like was addressed with signage. Well, well, the queuing and, and the pinch point was one concern. Uh, the 20-foot, uh, expansion to 20 foot seems like it'll resolve that. But also I was concerned that it would potentially block the, the, the entrance. And while, you know, someone going to get a coffee can just pull into one of the ar- parking lots if an emergency is, uh, you know, an- uh, ambulance or something needs to get in there and it's blocked. That's, that's a part of the concern, but it sounds like, you know, if there's proper signage uh, showing that queuing cannot extend past and block the intersection, you just gotta hope that, that people follow, follow the signage.
That's all we can do.
It looks like that's the only way in, in, in there, uh, you know, if there is an emergency.
Um. Yeah, Mr. Rosati, you know, there and give him like one of those safety patrol things and he can make sure everything goes smoothly.
Yeah, that, that's, that's part of my, uh, my agreement with the applicant.
I mean, if you're the fire truck, actually, you could get in through other, other ways if you really had to. But let's hope it doesn't come, to come to that, either through Ryder's Landing or a suicide entry for the other one.
Exhibit that shows exactly to that point how you can use emergency vehicles to come in. There's several, we have a, we have an exhibit that shows that.
Okay.
So this is, this is an exhibit for a fire truck in terms of, uh, actual templates that work. So, uh, we have a number of ways, both from the, coming from the south and then coming from the north and then being able to exit. Um, not only was this a requirement for, you know, looking at it from a public safety standpoint, but the DOT also wanted to make sure that we had addressed this properly.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Vigliati, Ms. Manos, any questions from you?
Now, is the restaurant gonna be there too?
I believe the coffee shop is, is, it's considered under Stratford regulations as a whole-service restaurant.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's just a coffee shop restaurant at this, at this phase.
Mr. Vigliati, I saw you had a question.
Uh, no, my, my question to the answer.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rosati, we'll turn it back to you. Any, uh?
Yes, so, um, thank you, uh, all, um, all of the experts, uh, for walking everybody through that. It's a great, um, plan, uh, like Mr. Hendrick says. Um, I, I just wanna, um, try and emphasize that, um, looking down on this, you see a parking lot. But that's if you're in one of Sikorski's helicopters. If, if you're standing in, in the streets fro- from Main Street, you're gonna see the beautiful architecture of the coffee shop. Uh, those finishes were, um, discussed and approved by ARB. You're going to see sidewalks, stone walls, landscaping. It's all gonna screen the parking lot. Um, so, uh, the parking lot is from, from Main Street is not going to be the focus, uh, as, as Robin uh, puts up some of those street views. Um, uh, and it, and it's not that big of an area. Again, it's misleading when you look at it. Um, the, the helicopter view.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the proposed building, uh, the coffee shop, it is on the street, uh, with the patio, the landscaping, the sidewalks, the stonework all along Main Street. And the parking's, uh, on the interior. Um, the entrance, the parking, the drive-through lanes, uh, that's all, um, located, um, uh, per tenant requirements and negotiations. And, and, you know, I'm bringing this all up because I'm, I'm responding to some of Jay's concerns about, uh, placing buildings along the street. Um, we, 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 um, we did what we could with, uh, this building along the street and, and softening the, the view of the parking lot, uh, from the street. Uh, but again, um, it's a catch-22. Uh, if we didn't design it this way, we wouldn't have gotten this anchor tenant, uh, this national, uh, operator who's going to hopefully attract, uh, users down the road for the other, uh, buildings, uh, the other phases of future development. Um, and, and that leads me to Jay's other concern about the additional parking area. Um, uh, as, as Mark Lankor pointed out, it, it's needed at this time, uh, to set up the infrastructure, uh, in- including the drainage, uh, so we could, um, phase in, uh, to, to the future buildings and the future development. Again, this construction is on 6540 only, uh, with this phase. Um, I, I'm sorry, the building, uh, construction, um, is on 6540. But we need the expanded, uh, parking lot. Uh, we need to, um, uh, construct the, um, the, the ring, uh, roadways, uh, where the abandoned streets were. Um, and, uh, and what's important is that's going to, um, allow us to tie into the existing CNC zone at Ryder's Landing, uh, that's also owned by the Sprigios. And that's gonna satisfy, um, at this point, before we build, uh, the other phases, the, the four different use requirement of, uh, section, uh, 7.6.1 of our regulations. Um, but that's important. It's, uh, it, it's a real necessary, uh, uh, requirement, uh, to, to, um, uh, build this additional, uh, area as part of the first phase. And, and I think we've sat, uh, we've established it's not gonna adversely affect traffic flows or safety. Uh, and it's, it's not going to affect, um, uh, cars, um, being backed up on, on Main Street. Um, so, so, uh, the expert testimony here tonight is satisfied, uh, as shown that we satisfied the CNC requirements. There's a sufficient parking, um, including parking for, uh, the outdoor seats that we show. Right now it's, um, it's 16 or less, so there's not an added, uh, parking requirement, uh, for, um, So, um, there's plenty of parking for the outside, uh, seating that is shown and proposed. Um, a- and again, uh, the, the CNC, uh, requirements regarding setbacks, height, uh, et cetera, they're all, we, we all fully comply. Um, and, and the ex, the exhibits have shown that the special cri- uh, case criteria of section 20 have been met. Um, it's, uh, in harmony with, uh, the master plan of development, uh, and again, the CNC zone. It's not going to adversely affect, uh, traffic, uh, and safety. Uh, the vehicle and pedestrian accessways are, are safe to present, uh, prevent hazards. Um, and what's important, again, they've been designed for DOT recommendations. And, uh, Robin, uh, pointed out, it's also been designed and it matches, um, the plans that were shown in the, um, the, the 2017, uh, study by, uh, Ty and Bond. Uh, Jay, I think I'm going to, uh, email this, uh, um, executive summary to you with 16 pages. Uh, I want that as part of the record, um, because the way we've, um, matched up our entrance is the way that, uh, they drew it in this study. So th- this didn't come out of thin air. Uh, tha- thank you, Robin. Okay, Robin has it there. Uh, this didn't come out of thin air. This, uh, the, the plan was developed hand-in-hand with the town study um, and, and with the DOT recommendations, uh, all with, um, uh, safety, uh, i- in mind and, and to avoid, uh, traffic hazards. There's going to be no offensive emissions of noise, light or smoke. Tax values are not going to be negatively impacted. Uh, this can only improve, uh, tax values of, of neighboring properties. Um, uh, from the, uh, staff comments, there's no, uh, fire police hazards or concerns at this time. Health, safety and general wel- welfare, uh, are not going to be adversely affected. Um, this is absolutely going to enhance the, the quality of life, uh, in, in, in the neighborhood and in Stratford overall. Um, we can't stress enough that this is a gateway. Um, I'm, I'm stealing, uh, Mr. Hendrick's arguments, uh, to, tonight. And, uh, when we were, we were before, uh, uh, this board two years ago with the zone change, um, Stratford cannot miss the opportunity to develop this, uh, beautiful gateway property, uh, a- a- and, and miss that opportunity and have something like this go to a neighboring town. Uh, Mr. Hendrick, you gave a, an impassioned plea the last time and, uh, and I'm using it here tonight. Thank you. ARB, uh, commented and, and approves of the, uh, uh, architecture with, uh, which is harmonious, uh, with the theme of the Merritt Parkway and the Sikorsky Bridge. Uh, the landscaping we've shown, uh, the, uh, along with the lighting and, and screening are all, uh, designed to enhance the view from the street. Um, regarding the, uh, the operation of the, um, uh, of the coffee shop, we, we expect there to be, uh, four or five employees, uh, at any one time. And, uh, the typical hours of operation are gonna be 5:00 AM, uh, um, excuse me, 5:00 AM in the morning to 9:00 PM at night. Um, we, uh, this is a long time coming. Uh, we've got all our ducks in a row and we've, um, uh, we've really, um, uh, honed this plan and redid this plan, uh, and, um, presented this, uh, tonight uh, with, with a lot of effort, uh, on everybody's behalf. Um, COVID, uh, came along, we had to adjust to, to, uh, We had to adjust to just coming in with this first phase only. But this first phase is going to bring in this anchor and set up the other phases. We addressed the staff comments. We went to pre-application meetings. We followed other recommendations of the boards, and we're now here. It'd be great. We feel we've put you in a position to vote on this tonight. We love a favorable vote of four votes tonight. The Spriglios are making a huge investment, and they need to start building. And we thank you for all your thoughtful consideration. I'll keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosati. Mr. Hammer?
So there were some recommendations. I don't know if you've addressed this. There were some recommendations from the Architectural Review Board. Have you taken those into consideration and incorporated them? Or I looked at some of them, and I didn't know where you started from.
Absolutely. Robin can probably address that. But we absolutely made some changes that addressed their recommendations.
One comment I had, I know when Rob, I think she did a great plan with design when she was showing all the Merritt Parkway standout pieces. One of the things, I saw the wings, and I just jokingly was going to make a comment, hey, you ought to incorporate those. And I was glad to see that those are going to be front and center on the entrance as well. I think you've done a great job to design. I'm a little surprised the outdoor seating isn't bigger. But I guess maybe with the coffee shop, you don't sit as long, but...
Mr. Hendrick, it could be. It could be. And if the tenant requires something bigger, especially with COVID, then we'll be back in here to address that. But this is a starting point.
And I think all the other staff comments you guys have addressed, you know, there were a number of them. I looked through them. It's hard to go back and forth from screen to screen. But I think the majority of them, Mr. Habansky's and John Casey's comments have been addressed.
Yes, they have. And going back to Jay's comments, hopefully with a favorable vote. Jay has four conditions of approval. We can certainly agree to two, three, and four. I think we addressed the reasons why we can't agree to his first condition regarding the additional parking spaces. But his conditions of two, three, and four, we submitted an alternate plan. If you like that plan with the queuing, we agree to that. We're going to submit that letter regarding the stormwater permit. And we can comply and implement the recommendation, certainly of the other departments.
And I know it's a little later on the agenda. He's got some recommendations for the erosion and sediment controls. You reviewed those, and you're okay with those four items as well?
I believe so. Mark can answer that.
One thing on the sediment erosion controls, and I don't know if, Robin, you can even put up one of the drawings. But if you take a look at the drawings, this is not, we've been around the block a lot now regarding erosion controls. And one of the things that is extremely important is phasing. How is a job going to be phased? And we've gone through great lengths with at least four phases of construction that shows how you start the project, how you grade the project, how you build the project, where the demo's coming in, and all the components that are associated with it, including the temporary controls. So this is a pretty expansive, extensive erosion control set of plans. But we've complied with that, and I think then some.
All right. I think that's, I mean, again, I just say again, you guys, I think did a great job with this. You put a lot of thought into it. Actually kind of excited to see something get started up there. And I know it's been a long time coming, so. I only wish that every application we looked at was well-thought-out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one additional item for the record that was sent to me today. And I didn't have time to get it up onto the website. It's a letter from the Stratford Waterfront Harbor Management Commission.
Okay, can you please summarize it just so that it's...
Sure, I'll just read you. I mean, they talk about their statutory authority, but essentially, their comments are, "The applicant should be required to employ appropriate best management practices as necessary during construction to avoid any adverse impacts to the harbor management area." And number two, "In general, the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission is concerned about the potential adverse impacts of stormwater runoff from impervious areas draining into the harbor management area. The plan calls for protection and improvement of water quality in the harbor management area and supports appropriate best management practices to avoid or otherwise mitigate non-point source stormwater pollution." And that's essentially their feedback. I just wanted to make sure you all have that.
Okay. Mr. Rosati, do you care to comment on that? I know I'm not sure if you had gotten an advance warning of that letter.
I think that was pretty much in the minutes, and that's pretty much their standard letter as part of the recommendation. Mark can speak on it, but we have no problem satisfying that. The way that our infrastructure is, is all the drainage is going to be contained on-site, and there's going to be no impact on the river. Mark, can you confirm that, please?
Yes, just for the record, we will comply completely with their standard conditions. I will tell you that the site soils on this site are very well-drained soils. And I'll be surprised if there's any water that actually gets out on those discharge points. But as every engineer has to do, we have to design for the worst case. And for the most part, I did not see any problems with complying with those standards.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Francis, any questions for you, sir?
No, no, they answered all my questions. I appreciate it. And it is a nice layout and design factor to blend in with the area. So it definitely is a good plan. I just had a little couple of questions, which you did answer, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vigliotti?
Yeah. So if we're going to go with this as Phase 1, and there's an anticipation of Phase 2, and the paid area needs to be so big at this stage, when do you anticipate Phase 2 starting? Like, how long are we going to have to see this, you know, kind of wide-open space parking lot area? You know, paid surface before Phase 2?
Bob Rosati, and that's a real hard question to answer because of COVID. We're hoping that this national tenant and what we build here is going to attract the users that we had in mind. Hopefully sooner than later, the properties are being actively marketed. I think once we build it, they will come. But COVID has made us change gears and has changed our timetable. But we plan on starting construction in the spring. And we're hoping when that construction starts and potential users see that something's being built there, and we come out of COVID, and it'll be sooner than later that we start developing the other phases. And of course, we have to come back in to see you guys when we're ready for those other phases. Thank you.
International, hospitality or retail? This national tenant that you're speaking about, is that retail or is that hospitality?
We're talking about the coffee shop being the national user. That is really an anchor that's going to attract other allowable CNC uses such as hospitality, restaurant, and retail.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Manos, any final questions?
No, I think it's a great project.
I just have one last question, so just to make sure I heard it correctly. So the traffic signal at the former Charlotte Street with 110. So that's going to have to be, is there a planned resequencing of that so that to create the four-way intersection? Or is it going to remain as-is until at such a point? How is that going to be handled? Because I know you have to change out equipment, but is the staging and the timing going to change?
For the record, Kermit Hua, our discussion with DOT, you know, at this point is because we have to change it because the existing pole is in the driveway. We have to build out the whole driveway. So that will be a new layout. But we don't expect to change the length of the green time, if that's what you're asking. We're not going to change the sequence of green time or length of green time. Just a hardware.
Because it's tight there as it is right now. And obviously, making that whole section flow, and there had even been a plan some years ago to change the Main Street Putney, Main Street interchange. And I don't think the plan ever went anywhere, but it had been discussed at some point. And we've just done all the improvements north of the parkway. So just want to make sure that we can keep the flow going through upper Main Street Putney and Main Street and the parkway.
Just to respond to a comment, I think I looked at DOT, the timing setting. The reason they do that is they try to keep a throughput along Route 10. So they do that by compromising, you know, in other words, giving less green time to the side street, including the Main Street approach at a riverboat intersection. That's sort of intentionally, they don't give a lot of green time to that approach. So we are seeing some people coming from Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we went all the way around. So I think we're ready for a motion to close. Raise your hand or say something first. Mr. Vigliotti, is there a second?
My second.
Mr. Francis, all in favor, say aye.
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 I heard somebody say something.
Well, was the public given an opportunity to speak? Or was there anybody looking to speak?
Mr. Habansky, did we receive any public comments?
No, we did not receive any written public commentary.
Okay.
You know, I'll leave it up to the commission. I think the commission has set kind of a policy that they expect commentary written to my office ahead of time, or Mr. Chairman, or if the applicant wants. I don't think there are too many folks here tonight might be able to poll if there's anyone for or against the application.
Wasn't that criteria set by the governor as to how these Zoom meetings were handled and public comment as well?
It was really left to the discretion. I mean, we don't have to take public comment. You know, what I'll say is that...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't closing without having done that. But if we're all set, then that's...
Who is this speaking? Just so I know?
Pat Sullivan.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. Yes, okay. That has been our practice that we would take for the last year almost, that public comments on any applications have to be submitted in writing. And I think we're going to hold to that ruling.
And if they weren't, anyway, that's fine. Thank you.
And there weren't any. Okay, thank you, attorney. So we have voted. I heard all that were in favor were saying aye. So I'm going to rule that we have closed this item of the public hearing. And we will move on to, assuming I can bring up my agenda real quick, petition number two. Give me one second, guys.
1907 Main Street Petition of Pickle's LLC Seeking Approval of Liquor Location to Establish a Class A Package Store Permit in a CA Zone.
You are on top of things. Thank you, Commissioner Hendrick. Is the petition present?
This is Attorney Tim Aspenwall, and I'm here to represent Pickle's LLC for Elaine Ferris and her husband, Alex Ferris.
Okay, proceed, sir.
Yes, again, my name is Tim Aspenwall. I'm here for Pickle's LLC. And our petition today seeks approval of a liquor location to establish a Class A package store permit in a CA zone. I'm a lifelong resident of Stratford. I'm in Stratford, offices here for over 60 years. The Ferrises are also Stratford residents. I have received these certificates of mailing. I wasn't quite sure how to handle them. I have the originals emailed.
Is that the certificates of mailing, sir?
Yes, and I did email them this evening to Jay Habansky. He did acknowledge that he's received them. I have the originals in my possession, and I have them. I'll certainly get them over to the office tomorrow. The mailings went out to the following Stratford Apartments, which is the old TD Ford at 3520 Piedmont Road. I do have the certificate of mailing as well as the green card. Alan Pickle, who owns SNA Real Estate LLC, which is actually the Pickle Barrel, which is right next door adjacent to this property, the old Brody's Drug Store. K&amp;A is its LLC, the laundry mart across the store. And there was a fourth mailing to the Two Family, which is just adjacent to the parking lot there, Minneapolis Mutual Investment. The certificate of mailing went out. The letter did come back, returned to sender. It was addressed to Minneapolis Mutual Investment at 1867 Main Street. The only address I had on file. What we have here, commissioners, is essentially a mom-and-pop situation. They're asking, they're literally risking their life savings to open this store in hopes of literally taking a bite of the American dream. I believe the requirements are in compliance with this. I would note, again, it's at a time. I'm a lifelong resident of Stratford. Never seen so many storefronts vacant the entire, you know, of my 60 years here. And this is really a mom-and-pop situation. They're taking a shot at it at a time of COVID. It's a breath-fresh year. Hopefully, this is the start of the reversal of what I'm seeing in the economy. I would note that I recently spoke to Bob Folk, who is the manager at Chase, and what he is seeing in the economy right now, and he noted, literally said to me, quote-unquote, "The mom-and-pop stores are what is failing, and it's what we need." This is that situation. They were hoping to give it a go. Believe they meet all the requirements, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Let's take questions from members first.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hendrick?
So Mr. Habansky's comments talked about a number of issues. Parking for the existing uses, proximity to another liquor store, its closeness to a two-family dwelling. So, how do you address those issues? I mean, it doesn't necessarily meet all our criteria.
The parking issue, I, where, actually, the calculation is for short. And the way I looked at it was this, and my argument would be if you, we, this came up with the Nail Salon, I believe, also. Nail Salon, you typically have first stations with three or four women working, and you'll have three, four people in there at the same time, possibly at the same time, hopefully at the same time, being worked on. Whereas if this is a liquor store location, I think your typical change is going to be you're in, you're out in a matter of minutes. Whereas the Nail Salon that was there prior to this store would, you'd have three or four workers, and you'd possibly have three or four people being worked on at the same time. The closeness to the location, I, I've obviously been there. I've seen the, actually, I wasn't aware until I spoke to zoning that new liquor store went in. To that, again, I would say this, that, you know, we're in a tough time and a tough economy. It's literally survival of the fittest. I think that my client's location, quite frankly, is a better location. It's more visible, and I think we'll see, hopefully see more traffic in terms of customers coming in the facility. So town wants to be known for having a liquor store on every corner. However, again, I think we are in historical times where numerous businesses are failing. To have a mom-and-pop situation come in, that they have the heart to actually put a shot. Again, I think it's a breath of fresh air, and I hope the commission would agree with me on that. The proximity to the Two Family, I, as a kid, went to St. James. I walked by, and I was thinking of it today as I was working out. And I should have researched it, I just didn't have the chance. But in the back of my mind, years and years, years ago, I think that may have been a liquor location at some point. I say that for sure because I haven't researched it, and it didn't really hit me until this morning. But I think it's a great location for a liquor store. I, I hope that I get some comment from the owners of the Two Family, but I, I received nothing.
And one more question, I guess, to Mr. Habansky. I know we have a statutory amount of liquor stores that we can have in town. There used to be at least, is that still the case? And where are we with our numbers, if it is?
Well, it is. When I got here, it is probably, the tracking of that internally had probably stopped maybe seven or eight years prior to me getting here. I know that conversations that I had with Liquor Control about, about where we were, they advised that anytime an applicant is concerning, is looking for a package store license, that we should have them talk to the state prior to, prior to making any applications in the, in the event that, let's say, the zoning commission approves a liquor, a liquor, a package store license, and then they go to the state and the state says, no. So, I, I'm, I'm positive we have not reached our limit, but I know we are getting close.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's my, my recollection is we're, we're very close, I think, single digits. But I, I'm not current on it, I know it, but I know that there is a number that we can max out at, and we were close to it. Questions from other members?
Yes, this is D.L. Francis. Is there, Jay, this actually may be a question for you. I don't know, maybe it's state guideline. Is there, is there a distant qualification, like distance from other liquor stores? Because I mean, I can kind of count five liquor stores and not even half a mile, quarter mile away. No?
I don't... Statutory...
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
Well, go ahead, Tim, you can answer, and I can follow up.
I'm not aware of a statutory, uh, I, I, statute on this, and I'm obviously aware of the package store around the corner and the one on Ferry Boulevard as well. And then you've got the, I think it's one up towards the, the old AVCO building. But, you know, a- again, I, I would argue to the commission that, you know, we're, we're in a historically critical time where a lot of establishments are failing. They're taking a shot, you know, they, they hope, and would petition the commission to approve it and give them a shot at their contribution.
Apparently, it's Section 30-14A of the Connecticut general statutes. We're entitled to twenty. So, although that's based on the last census number, so we'll have to verify that. We might want to make that as part of our motion if we decide to approve pending.
And this is Jay Habansky. I'll add that, you know, I believe prior to me getting here, the Stratford regulations used to have a prohibition based on distances to certain locations. That might not be the case, but I'm pretty sure I remember reading somewhere that that's what happened. And eventually, there was some case law in Connecticut that deemed that these distance prohibitions were illegal. And that Stratford revised their application to say it's no longer prohibited, but we still want to know the distance to a playground, church, the nearest similar liquor, liquor permit.
The only playground that I'm aware of is St. James. If, if you would call that a playground. I did attend that as a kid, and there were basketball hoops in the back, in the parking lot. Whether or not that would qualify as a playground, I don't know.
Okay, any...
All right, so there's no statute. It's basically, it's basically knowledge, Jay, right? Knowledge of the distance, it's not, but it's not a statute or a guideline.
No.
No prohibition based on the distances, correct? Just for informational knowledge.
Yeah, that was repealed some years ago. I remember that.
There used to be a distance, like the 1500 ruling for restaurants for liquor permit. There used to be one for liquor stores too, but they got rid of that. It was supposed to be discretion of the committee, council. That's the way they left it. I mean, it's got to be like four or five years, six years ago.
More. More, yeah, no.
More? Okay, more. So...
Okay, any other questions? And we did talk, I mean, the traffic and the parking situation, I think is going to be something we have to consider based on what I'm seeing there, because, but apparently that's the way it's been for some time. Okay, if not, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry again, Tim Aspenwall. Again, I would note that if you, if you look at what was in there, the Nail Salon, I think the traffic and the parking due to their services would be much heavier than what you'd see because of the fact that the people would be in there and be in there longer and be in there with a worker. This store, there'll probably be one worker in there at a time servicing whoever comes in and out. So I think it will reduce, it's less traffic than Nail Salon in there.
Okay, any further questions on...
It, it actually would be more traffic, because my wife actually goes, went to that Nail Salon. So they go by appointment, so there's no more people in there than there are workers in there. So you're figuring six workers, I mean, six people, three people and three workers in there at a time where liquor stores is constant in-and-out traffic. So it'd be more traffic in-and-out, definitely, and definitely more than the Nail Salon.
I, I, I think, I'm sure things have changed. I, I've never been in a Nail Salon, so I am, I'm assuming it was walk off the street as service, but I stand corrected.
I have a question. Has, Mr. Aspenwall, has any consideration been given to approaching the state first? You know, to inquire about getting some sort of licensing? Having them give their opinion on whether another one is needed at this location?
I, I would certainly, if board recommends it, I would certainly...
Okay, thanks.
I think we lost. But part of the, part of the process would be that if we did approve them, they would have to go to the Liquor Commission or whoever the authority is to get their license. So even if we approved them, they could still be denied by the state based on their criteria for numbers.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it doesn't necessarily even have to be a stipulation because it's part of the process, they'd have to go through...
Yeah, I think you're right.
They couldn't, they could, just because we approved it, doesn't give them the...
Right overstate law, no.
I was actually, I had the time, and I was actually going to attempt to make the application to state, but I was not able to do it because obviously zoning couldn't sign off on it for me to make the application. I would have done it otherwise.
So you need our approval first before you can go to the state?
Yes.
That, it has, I'd go off the town clerk as well as zoning. Town clerk did sign off on it. Zoning said that I needed approval before I could approach this.
Okay, any further questions on the application itself? We can work out the legalities elsewhere. If not, we'll take a motion to close.
Second. Motion to close.
Motion to close, Ms. Manos, is there a second?
Second, Mike Henrik.
Mr. Henrik, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose no carries unanimously. We'll move on to petition number three. You want to take it, Mr. Henrik?
Sure. 189 Ferry Boulevard, petition of Alum Dayub seeking an approval of a liquor location to establish a Class G grocery beer permit incidental to a convenience store in a CA zone.
Is the petitioner present?
petitioner is present, and I'm Attorney Max L. Rosenberg, representing Mr. Alum Dayub, which is the owner of Kabani and Dayub LLC, which is doing business as Snacks Plus for the better part of a year, I believe, since July 16th of last year. A very difficult time to open up a convenience store. This is a convenience store in a major commercial corridor right Ferry Boulevard. This is at 189 Ferry Boulevard. And we're seeking the approval of a liquor location to establish a Class G grocery beer permit incidental to the convenience store in a CA zone. We are in compliance with all the rules and regs for the zone. And my client is a family man who's worked in Stratford for the past sixteen to seventeen years at the Shell Gas Station on Ferry Boulevard. I myself have been practicing law in Stratford for the better part of twenty years. My son goes to St. James School, which is roughly about half a mile away from the location that is making this petition. In fact, he's the vice president of middle school there right now. The site for this application is located in a central zone consisting primarily of commercial and retail establishments and professional businesses. It's a subject parcel, it's a small-scale commercial development. It does butt in RS4 residential zone. We are aware of the requirement for notifying all of the neighboring property owners have hand-delivered all the green cards and the affidavit today. Those are in, we do have copies if you see that. And Mr. Dayub is running a family business. In fact, his son is here online with us tonight. His whole family is involved in this business. This is, again, the American dream. This is somebody who came here from another country with nothing and has been building up for the last several decades to build this store, to do this now in Stratford, where he's worked for the last sixteen, seventeen years. And it's a very, very nice family, a very nice business, and it's a pretty standard petition.
Okay, any questions for the judge?
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 I'm also pro-bate for Stratford, but tonight I appear in front of you all in the eyes. I'm currently representing his client vociferously advocating for the best interests of my client and what I believe to be the best interests of our wonderful town. I am also a resident of the town. I live down in Lordship. And yes, I am also your pro-bate judge.
No worries, Your Honor, I'm just showing respect.
Very much, it's not necessary. I very much appreciate it, commissioners. I appreciate all of what you are doing here tonight and taking your, your time away from your families to be doing this wonderful, wonderfully tedious work.
So, so just very quickly, this, this store is actually open and, and running, running business right now. Is that correct?
That is correct. I don't know if you can see this cute little picture I have here. I know there are some people on their phones, but you can see it's Snacks Plus. This used to be a florist and a dry cleaners. Hold on, I've got those names.
I don't know that we can see your screen. Jay, do you want to make sure?
I can see it.
Oh, you can? Okay, then it's just me.
Yeah, I can see it.
This is where Astro Florist and the Thoro Clean used to be. And he's, he's basically taken up a little strip mall there. And as far as we know, there, there are absolutely no objections. We did talk to some of the people in the neighborhood, nobody had any problems.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners, Mr. Henrik?
Yeah, quick question. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Is he going to take over both the storefronts or consolidate the building? Or is, is there still mixed use there?
No, I think it's just two of the storefronts. There are multiple other storefronts in the strip mall.
Yeah, so, but he'll, he'll take over two of them?
Two of them, yeah.
I read Mr. Habansky's comments, he had no issues, so parking isn't a problem there, I'm assuming?
No, big, big parking lot.
Okay, awesome. That's all I had.
The only question I have, this is D.L. Francis. How you doing, Judge?
Francis.
So this, if I read this correctly, this is just for beer. This is not for...
Cold beer. That's all it is.
Beer, right? Right.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was correct on that.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions from any members?
No.
Here and now, we'll take a motion.
He's a very hard worker, I could say.
We'll take a motion to close. Close with Mr. Henrik. Second by Ms. Manos, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I look forward to being, able to see all of you in person when this pandemic is finally over.
I think we're all looking forward to it. It's been a long year.
I'm ready to do it now.
Yep. I know. March 22nd, yeah. Okay, we have one final one on the agenda. Why don't we just call it, and then I have a question before we get started for it. So, my call, petition four?
One Door and Drive, petition of Nikki's Beach House Grill LLC seeking a site plan review and modification of the existing plan of approval to allow for live indoor music incidental to a restaurant in an MA zone.
Okay, my question is this. Members, we're coming up on two hours, we've been in session. Anybody need to take a five-minute break? No? Okay, we're going to cruise through it. So, is the petitioner present?
Yes, I am. Hi, I am Nikki. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Habansky. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
I am, good evening. I am going to be the new Lucy at One Door and Drive. I was prior the GM at Beach House Grill. prior the GM at Beach House Grill, and I am petitioning the zoning commission for approval to modify my existing plan to allow for indoor music at One Door and Drive. Short and sweet.
Okay, that was short and straight and sweet. Um, so that's the extent of the application? Is it just for, just for the indoor music?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I'll ask members for questions while I'm looking up something. Thank you. Mr. Henrik, Mr. Vigliati, Mr. Francis?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Henrik.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know who this question would go to, but, uh, the old, I think it was called the Grill House or whatever was down there, uh, had music. Um, was, was the application, the, was, was the application not approved with the same standards as the old restaurant or was it just filed differently? Or is this just the standard because of a new owner kind of thing?
Well, I might be able to answer that. Uh, Commissioner Henrik, are you referring to the Beach House Grill that was approved in the 2016 after the, the Parks and Rec Department left there?
Yeah. Is that what, is that where this is going or?
That's where this is going, correct. Uh, you know, we had gone through and I think the, the former, the former proprietor as well as the current applicant all had, were under the assumption that live music was approved, uh, at that previous site. You know, we went back, um, I went back, looked at all the files and there were no approvals for live music, which, uh, part of what added some confusion, uh, to, for the applicant is that, uh, we had signed off, and when I say we, I mean, I had signed off on the form of liquor permit, um, that allowed for, that said, certain live music was allowed. Unfortunately, because I signed that, but unfortunate, also unfortunately, I don't have the authority to grant the live music. That's the special case. That's done through the special case process in the zoning commission. Only you all have that. So, um, the applicant is trying to, um, uh, trying to make sure that their liquor permit is going to align with their local permit and do things, I think, the right way. So there's, there was some confusion based on the liquor permit, but there was not previous approval, at least in our files, for, for live music.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, just to that point then, I mean, I've just a comment, I've been down, I was at the old place quite a number of times. My daughter played there. Um, it was a great place to have music. It was, uh, um, never had any issues. You know, I don't think there ever complaints from the neighbors or whatever it was. So, I mean, it, to me, it seems like we're just allowing them to continue on the same use, whether, whether formally approved or not, um, the same use that, that was taking place there. So I look forward to it. Hopefully, um, I doubt it'll happen, but hopefully our approval will allow you to start playing live music tomorrow.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Deion Francis. Um, so there's, there's no structural change or anything? They just want a permit for music, to have live music in the inside?
That is correct. I just want to do things the right way. I want it to be on paper. I want it to be legit, and I want to do it the right way.
Okay, great, great. I can't wait till the music starts. I can't wait till the summer comes and, uh, this COVID stuff is squashed, so I can go.
Neither can I.
Uh, question to Mr. Habansky, and I just want to make sure this is clear, that this actually applies in this situation, because your comments don't quite go in, and we know we had, you and I had an offline discussion about this earlier. Uh, section 7.1.7.2, section K of our regulations states that there shall be no live or recorded music played or projected outside the establishment. Um, am I correct in understanding that that zoning regulation would apply in this situation?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so just so the applicant is clear, this, and I think it, it's fairly clear in, uh, Mr. Habansky's, uh, note here. It says, "All live music shall be contained indoors and in strict compliance with noise ordinances enforced by the Health Department." Just want to make sure that's completely clear, um, how this is structured, because we actually do have a townwide prohibition on outdoor, uh, live music.
We wouldn't want her to do anything that every other restaurant in town.
Heaven forbid.
Isn't already doing.
I'll, I'll send the calls your way, Mike.
And I'll add, I'll, this is Jay Habansky, I'll add that, you know, we had spoken with the applicant, I had spoken with the applicant about, you know, a lot of the enforcement calls that we do get about certain locations and how that, that regulation is quite broad. So once it starts getting too loud and you're over the noise ordinance, we'll ultimately end up hearing about it. So as long as there's, it's done appropriately and in compliance with the, the, uh, the noise ordinance, it shouldn't be an issue.
So now, um, uh, this is Deion Francis. Um, so she wouldn't be allowed to have a live band inside, and if people are eating outside, have like speakers of the live band? No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions for members? Mr. Vigliati, Ms. Manos?
No.
Uh, in terms of, um, if I remember correctly, that there was, um, the hours of operation were kind of early, like in other words, the, the restaurant closed like at nine or 10 o'clock. Was that, was that a part of that original, um, you know, because I was thinking, if it doesn't get to be too late, it does, you know, the, you know, issues with, with, with noise might not even be an issue, but I, I, unless I'm misremembering.
That's a good question. I know that we've asked that question, is what were the hours of the restaurant, or do we have any information on that?
So this is Jay Habansky here. The original hours of operation, I don't have the formal last approval, two approval letters ago. I don't have it in front of me, but, um, I believe the bar had to close at, uh, nine and the restaurant couldn't stay open past 10, uh, for, I think it was one year. Um, and assuming that things went well, um, the applicant came back a year later. Uh, there were no issues with enforcement or complaints, and at that time the zoning commission voted for the, uh, hours operation to be consistent with what state law allows. So they're allowed to do, their approvals allow them to do what any restaurant in, in, uh, that the state of Connecticut allows them to do per hours.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Francis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vigliati. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no, carries unanimously. And we'll take a motion to close. Yes?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It wasn't true. We heard there. Okay, and, um, take a motion to close the public hearing, uh, to adjourn or recess the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Francis. There's a second, Ms. Manos. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, oppose no, carries unanimously. The public hearing concludes at 9:01 PM, and we can go right into our administrative session.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henrik.
I'd make a motion to take 6520 to 6540 Main Street, uh, 100 Oren Oak Place, 111 Leslie Street, 109 Charlotte Street off the table.
We have a motion to take, um, item one, just call it, off the table. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vigliati, and the motion was by Mr. Henrik, just for the record. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the application.
Motion approved by Mr. Henrik. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Manos. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henrik.
Um, as I stated during the, the public forum portion of this, I think these guys have done an, an amazing job of putting this plan together. A lot of, a lot of foresight went into it. Um, a lot of planning. They, they followed all the steps. I think they've done a great job. I think it's gonna be a great spot for Stratford, or at least, at the very least, the start of what will be a great spot for Stratford. Um, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to it taking place, but I think with the landscaping, with the architectural design, with the historical nature of the Merritt Parkway elements, I think they've really, uh, done an amazing job of putting it together and, and following all the rules and regulations we set out, all the work they've worked through the, uh, you know, with it, with the state DOT. Um, I, I, I think it's gonna be a great addition to Stratford, and I'm looking forward to it. I think they've, they've done exactly what we've asked of, of all our applicants, so I would strongly urge.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Vigliati, I heard you first, and then Mr. Francis.
Well, I would just like to say that, you know, I, I feel like they've done a great job. They've been very cooperative and had a real good spirit of, uh, cooperation with the town and all of our expectations. Um, so I don't see any reason why they shouldn't get a shot at it.
Okay, Mr. Francis?
Yeah, I also believe they, they've, uh, followed, I believe, 99% of the recommendations I'm giving to them. Um, you know, they, they actually just, I, and they actually took into consideration a new, um, recommendation by Mr. Henrik, um, with the signage. Um, they were more, more than willing to be compliant, and, and, and I love the way they incorporated the, uh, the surrounding area, um, and to, into that location. And it was pretty, pretty well designed and, uh, presented. So I, I, I think they, they should definitely have a chance to make that really prosperous.
So the commissioner makes a good point. Let's, uh, and Mr. Habansky, I'm putting you on warning because we might have to talk through these things. So, um, do we have to indicate which one of the two proposals we are indeed approving?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What, so, um, two, well, some of the things I'd like to add, make it part of, part of the approval, would be items two, three, and four of Mr. Habansky's, um, of Mr. Habansky's recommendations, and I think one of those did include the 20-foot, um, width of that parking space, and if it.
Yeah, I believe that's item two, which says, "The one-way driveway adjacent to the drive-through queuing lane shall be widened to prevent the lane or restaurant entrance from being blocked at busy service times. A revised site plan shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning reflecting this change." And that, I believe, would be the one that was presented during the public hearing today. Okay, I'm seeing, nodding good, yep.
And also.
I do have a copy of that in the record.
You do have a copy in the record, okay.
And also to include in that approval would be the additional signage at the, uh, stay left, at that, at that, uh, bump out to, uh, to just denote that there is no queuing beyond this point.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll take all of these stipulations as, uh, an amendment. We'll vote on them separately and then on the underlying application, just so that we're clear procedurally. Um, so any other, um, stipulations or changes on here that any members want to bring up, or Mr. Habansky, that we should be aware of? I know we have the MS4 stormwater permit including there. That's item three on the list that, uh, you had provided, and is part of Mr. Henrik's amendment.
Jay Habansky here. Uh, that's something that we're actually able to report as compliance with our stormwater permit. So any, anytime, uh, the app, uh, zoning commission attaches that, that essentially helps our reporting and it shows that we are in, in fact enforcing that here locally. So I know the applicant had stated on the record that the project does comply. However, we do ask for that letter in writing.
Okay, and for the purposes of just moving this forward, I'll second Mr. Henrik's motion to amend the, the approval with the items that were in there, items two, three, four.
And the signage.
And the signage, correct, sir. Yeah. Any other?
Question here.
Please, go ahead, sir.
So Jay, does that mean you don't have that stormwater compliance letter at this point?
No, we do. It was included. I was just, uh, reiterating what Commissioner Henrik had stated, that we, we, we'd like to have that in writing, and I just wanted to explain why.
And that would be part of the sediment and erosion control application, or is that different?
Uh, I believe, I have that included as part of the, uh, site plan review and special case application. That is item number three of my three suggested conditions.
Yeah, item three that we're referring to, just so it's clear, the applicant shall obtain a letter from a licensed engineer ensuring this project's compliance with the town of Stratford's MS4 stormwater permit. This letter shall be delivered slash emailed to the Office of the Planning and, and Zoning and kept in the applicant's file.
So, so my amendment would be to include items two, three, and four of Mr. Habansky's comments and to include the additional signage regarding the queuing.
Right. Are there any further comments on the stipulations or amendments to the application? If not, I'll try your minds. All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment carries. Any final comments on the application as presented? I will just say that I, I concur with all the statements that are, that were made. Um, this has, we've gone, we've looked at a lot of uses for this particular parcel for the years that I've been involved in here. Um, and, uh, this looks like this could be a very positive, uh, development. Um, I'm pleased with the answers that were provided as far as the traffic control and understanding the, uh, the former intersection of Leslie Street and Main Street. Um, I really love those, um, the angel wings on the, uh, that model off of the, uh, the James Farm Road, uh, Merritt Parkway. So anytime there's a respect for our history, I'm always a fan of that. Um, we're, I'm anxious to see what the rest of the development will happen, but I do understand the position of the applicant that, um, due to the unique economic challenges COVID presents, it will be some time before we know exactly how that's going to work itself out. But we, anytime that they, they will have, just as a procedural note, and I think Mr. Rosati brought it up, um, when they come to go for the next phases, they will have to come before us, and obviously, uh, the commission, if it's us or our successors, um, will evaluate the impact of those properties on, uh, the surrounding area. Am I missing anything, Mr. Habansky? You good to go?
No, I think you have it all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that case, we'll go for it. All in favor of the application, say aye. As amended, say aye.
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 Oppose no, carries unanimously. Have a good evening, Mr. Rosati. We appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Henrik, wanna keep us going? Good night.
Sure. Motion to take 1907 Main Street off the table?
Motion to take 1907 Main Street off the table. Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Vigliati.
Second by Mr. Vigliati. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no, carries unanimously. Uh, your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve 1907 Main Street.
Motion to approve 1907 Main Street by Mr. Henrik. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Manos. Uh, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henrik.
Mike Henrik, um, I, I, I think there are some issues with the property, uh, parking and, uh, proximity to another liquor store. They're not necessarily hard regulations, the, the proximity, um, the parking has been what it has been since, you know, the beginning of time, which is probably about when that place opened up, but it is what it is, and there's nothing we can do to change it. I don't, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about it, but I don't know that I'd be willing to deny the application based on, uh, on those, those issues. Uh, I think they are gonna either help or hurt the business, um, but I don't know that it's gonna have any, um, any more of a significant impact, for better or worse, on the neighborhood or, or the, or the surrounding businesses. So I think it is what it is. I think whatever goes in there is gonna have the same concerns and issues, and, um, you know, like again with the distance, I, I don't know that there's, you know, that's enough. I don't know that that distance regulation is enough for me to say no, but I'll, I'll, you know, I'd be curious to hear what the other, other commissioners think as well.
Okay, further debate?
Uh, yes, this Commissioner Francis.
Commissioner Francis.
I don't think that the traffic in and out is going to make a substantial factor, but I believe it will make a factor. Like I said, it's gonna be. it's going to be a big difference from the traffic that was going in there from the traffic that's going to be coming in and out. But that being said, will it be that much traffic? Because there's so many liquor stores in that vicinity. I mean, you have one right near the flag, uh, Jones. I mean, yeah, believe me, I know where they are. I mean, you have one on Ferry Boulevard.
So you can have one more.
Right. And, and then you have the new one we just approved, the right, I'm talking about not even four houses around the corner. And then you have one right down the street on Main Street before you can get to the one he was referring to in the plaza going towards worship. So I just, I, come on, I mean, this, uh, we, you know, I love my town. I grew up here. Do you really think we need that many liquor stores in one area? I mean, something else that's better conducive to that area can go there. And I know I'm not the business owner, but I mean, how much money you really think you're going to cut off from all those liquor stores that everybody knows and been dealing with for years? I mean, and we're, and we're just flooding our, our community with liquor stores. I mean, that's, that's a problem in itself. So I don't particularly agree with another liquor store location at that position. And then we just approved the, uh, the beer down the street, across the street from the other liquor store that I was referring to, Con Ferry Boulevard. So how far do we really want to go with this as Commissioners? And the, the perception of what we're supposed to be standing for in these seats? For our community, for our town, for the progress of our town. But there could be something legitimately great to go in that location besides the liquor store.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Manos or Mr. Vigliotti, any comments?
My, Mr. Vigliotti.
Well, you know, um, yeah, I, I, I was surprised when, um, uh, you know, the applications for, uh, another beer and liquor establishment to go in there, uh, considering, as, you know, Commissioner Francis said, the proximity, you know, I mean, it's right around the corner from where I live and there, you know, I, 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 I've walked in distance to about six different places. Uh, it, it's just, I, I, I wish they had thought of something, uh, more creative, uh, to put in that spot instead. Um, but, you know, I don't understand in the way some of these dreamers, it's really their dream to own a liquor store. You know, and, you know, uh, Jerry Aspelwall made a pretty compelling argument. Um, I, you know, but I just, I had my own reservations on the success, but, uh, I, but I'm no pro- I'm not the theater of business.
Ms. Manos, any comments?
It's a hard one.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree, uh, with Deanderis. I mean, we just approved one right around the corner, a big one. Um, you know, right over there. I don't believe it's going to do a lot of business there because we have them surrounded. So, um, I don't know if I'm in favor of it or, uh, I don't know. I just, uh, I just don't know.
Okay, I think I-
It's just a small little place.
Yeah. And a quick, a quick addition, I forgot about, there's a bar right across the street.
That's true.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think I find myself with Mr. Hendrick on this one. Uh, I, I, I question the wisdom of the decision of trying to open one there and with Mr. Francis that, uh, it seems like that area is getting flooded by them. Um, and with only twenty of them that were allowed, you see, sort of have to spread it out. On the other hand, our job is not necessarily to opine on the wisdom of it, of a, of an application, but it's to opine on its legality. Um, that whatever's going to go into that store is going to, in that particular unit is going to have the exact same problems there as far as traffic and, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure. I, I don't know that I necessarily see a justification for denying it, but, um, yeah, this is not, not, not probably not the best application to, that we've gotten so far, but, okay. Um, further comments? Should we try a voice vote, or do you want to go by roll call?
Is there any, is there any sort of, um, I mean, I know that we all have our, our, the town has preferences for distances and things like that, but is there any sort of, um, uh, metric we could use for feasibility of something like this? Like if, if there's so many liquor stores within a small radius of each other, what is the feasibility of them succeeding or stuff like, and, and maybe able to? I don't know. I, I, I.
Hmm, I don't think so.
Have them, have them come back with a bagel shop instead. I don't, I don't.
I mean, I can just add that, you know, there's no metric that I know of. And, you know, it, it was discussed. I'm not trying to sway the vote one way or the other. I'm just trying to repeat some of the things that I heard, you know, I mean, it, it, it's either you take, the zoning commission is well enti- certainly entitled that, uh, to have the opinion that they, they feel, uh, a proposed use will not provide a needed service for the neighborhood. It's, um, and, uh, or they can take the position that it's, as the applicant stated, uh, it's a survival of the fittest and this applicant could potentially have a, uh, a better product. Um, or if they don't, the other, their competition will, um, will take their business. And, you know, I think you're entitled to have either one of those positions. I'm not trying to sway you, but give you some more information to maybe help you, help you along.
And that's a good point. We're not necessarily in the business of picking who wins, who loses. Let the market figure it out.
You know, I, I, I kind of agree on that. I mean, the way you put it that way, Jay, I mean, yeah, I mean, if that's their dream, that should be their, their opportunity to succeed or fail. Um, I just don't want to, I just don't want to be labeled as a town that has liquor stores on every corner. You know? That's not the look.
We may not have many more.
But, uh, but yeah, it is also not our right also to decide what should go where and what kind of business he should try to open. So I just, it's a hard one. Um, yeah.
All right, let's try to take a vote.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Said, just, like I said, it, um, I don't know that it's the best or the worst, but I don't know that anything we do put in that location is going to be better or worse. So, um, you know, I, I think they'll, I think they'll do okay. You know, that in, in a thriving market, you want to, you want to be in a location with less liquor stores. You know, you want to be the only liquor store in town. And then you'll do exceptionally well, but I, I don't know that any other business will be better or worse. It, you know, it just kind of, it comes down to the storefront and how they maintain it and how they treat their customers. And they might develop a, a small, you know, local clientele that, that, you know, just enjoy him and accompany him when he runs the business. So I, I, I don't know that it, I don't know that it, it's a bad thing. I, I mean, maybe something's better, but I don't know that it's a bad thing. And that's, you know, I, I say, let's give him a shot and hopefully he, he does it right.
And we'll see what happens.
All right.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? I guess we got a winner, five zero.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to take one eighty-nine Ferry Boulevard off the table.
Motion to take one eighty-nine Ferry Boulevard off the table. Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Francis, all in, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti? Uh, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman.
Um, since we, uh, have another liquor store, I think we need another beer establishment.
Getting thirsty here, guys.
I think, I think this one's a little easier. Um, you know, it's, it's part of, part of a convenience store, grocery store. I think it'll, it'll help the applicant, you know, um, help the applicant with his business. Um, there's ample parking there. It's not in a residential area necessarily. Um, I think it, I, I think it fits in with the location and, uh, and, and I think it'll, I, I think it'll help. I, I think it'll add a plus to the business and help him his survival rating as well.
Absolutely. Uh, any further comments?
He's a very hard worker, that guy. He used to be over in the gas station on Ferry Boulevard. And he works hard, the whole family. So I think he'll make a go of it.
Also, he was previously a whole, okay, I, I, yeah, I think I sort of guessed that based on the name Snacks Plus, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. To clarify on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion?
I don't see, I don't see no, any reason why not to. I mean, it's a convenience store already. Um, he's, he's been established here. And that would definitely help his business in, in an already hard business of small businesses right now at this point. And, uh, and if somebody doesn't drink like strong alcohol, they just want a beer, they don't have to go to separate locations and that could help him out. And, uh, probably give him some more profit. So I, I mean, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
One Door Drive, Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to take one Door Drive off the table.
Commissioners, Mr. Hendrick will be saying thank you for your wisdom. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Your pleasure, sirs.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Francis? Oh, by Ms. Manos. Okay, we'll spread the wealth tonight, you know, by Ms. Manos. Okay, discussion?
Chairman?
Mr. Hendrick.
I wanted to commend the applicant for, for, uh, trying to follow the rules and get this done properly. Um, it, it was, I, I think the belief of everybody that, that the last establishment, whether, um, through uh, oversight or whatever it might have been, did not have the, all the proper paperwork, but it's something that's gone on there for quite some time. There have never been any real issues over there. And I would hope the applicant does nothing differently except succeed, but nothing differently than the, than the last restaurant regarding the music or any other establishment in Stratford that has music.
Okay, further discussion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Francis. I think it's a great idea to have, uh, some live music down there. We need some more entertainment in Stratford. Especially.
We sure do.
You know? But, uh, I, I think, I think it's definitely a, a positive. And, uh, I'm glad she took the right, right route about, about going about it through the right channel. So I, I definitely think it's a good, a good, a good choice.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Urbanski?
Uh, I'm not sure if there was, uh, Jay Urbanski here. I'm not sure if there was discussion, but I, I know the Stratford Health Department who enforces the noise ordinance would greatly appreciate, uh, the, uh, a condition that all music be contained indoors and that strict, there's strict compliance with the noise ordinance. You know, we've, 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 I have the, my office has the unfortunate, uh, task of, uh, negotiating with folks that are, where there's been live music allowed and, um, uh, others, other commissions haven't allowed, haven't set an expectation for compliance with the noise ordinance. And I know that this would go a long way in my task of endorsing these with the, with the help of the Health Department. So that's my suggestion.
Yes, I think what we'll do is, let me just make a quick amendment here to, um, incorporate items one and two that were listed on the, uh, the zoning, planning and zoning comments, which reads, "All comments received from the Health Department should be strongly considered and all live music shall be contained indoors and in strict compliance with noise ordinances enforced by, uh, the Health Department." And I would also just cite, I lost it unfortunately, uh, compliance with section seven point one point seven point two K. I'll make that as a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Manos. Any other stipulations or any other thing that we want to add in there? Conditions?
Just, just a, a question of Mr. Urbanski, is that, is that a, uh, a regulation or requirement placed on all businesses that have, uh, music?
Yes. Uh, music or machine shops or any, any type of business. Oh, actually, it's not, it's not only business. It could apply to someone just playing loud music at their home. The noise ordinance applies to all.
I think the only time we've ever made an official exception for that was, um, the sort of unique situation we had over at the dock when they were doing the road, road construction. But that's created a bunch of issues.
There are some noise exemptions for Sikorsky aircraft along the river.
Yeah, they play a lot of music down at Sikorsky.
That's just noise.
Yeah.
Shall, shall we need to vote on the amendment?
Let's vote on the amendment than the underlying application. So all in favor of the amendment, including the stipulations, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Any final comments on the, uh, application as amended? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously.
Chairman?
With Mr., Mr. Hendrick.
Motion to approve the minutes of the one twenty-seven twenty-one meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second?
Second.
I mean, second.
Yeah, we have a group here now. Okay, now you guys woke up finally. That's good. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make that one. Let's see, whoever I called in for a while, let's, we'll give Ms. Manos for that one. We'll give that one to you. Uh, any corrections, changes, uh, clarifications on the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve campsite review?
Okay, campsite review. Um, we have a motion approved by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Ah, you guys are slipping there. Okay, uh, so that will get to Mr. Vigliotti. Um, okay, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, um, I was just looking for it, and I don't know if there are any other comments in there. Um, but I guess I'd ask, uh, Mr. Urbanski if he had any comments or, uh, anything he wanted included in there?
So the, the, yes, Jay Urbanski here. The only, uh, recommendation that I had regarding this approval was that, uh, that any and all recommendations made by, uh, John Goucher with DEEP, um, uh, be incorporated in that a letter from DEEP, uh, ensuring compliance with their comments is submitted to our office. Uh, I believe I heard on the record, the applicant already, um, uh, agreed to that stipulation.
Okay, you want to add that to your?
So would we need to amend it, or has it already been taken care of?
That's what I was about to say, Mike.
I think you need to add that.
Okay. All right. So I'd make a, I'd make a motion to amend to include the comments of Mr. Urbanski.
Okay. We'll take a motion to amend that by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Francis, uh, any discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Uh, final discussion on anything else on the campsite review that we need to know before final approval? Anyone? If not, as amended, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Uh, enforcement studies, complaints, anything wrong? Hearing none. Any accessory apartment applications, Mr. Urbanski?
No.
Nope. Okay, sediment and erosion. I know that we covered a lot of that in the public hearing. So I think we need what, one more approval for that one?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the sediment erosion control of sixty-five twenty Main Street or no place, Leslie Place and Leslie Street and Charlotte Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Francis. I think I saw his first. Uh, any discussion on the sediment and erosion?
Uh, just again, I would ask, uh, Mr. Urbanski if he had any comments. I know there were some remarks he had in there. Would they need to be included in there or? there were some remarks he had in there. Would they need to be included in there or, um, have we covered that already?
Yes, I would, Jay Hibansky would suggest the commission to, uh, stipulate the standard for conditions of approval for erosion sediment control similar to the MS four letter. This helps us with our reporting, uh, in inspections to ensure that the erosion and sediment controls are up in place. They are calling the zoning enforcement officers. So, uh, compliance with the Connecticut, Connecticut soil and erosion sediment control guidelines, um, that once all, uh, siltation and erosion controls are up, they, uh, they notify the zoning enforcement officer for inspection prior to any site work. Uh, any modifications need to be made if there's any, um, controls fail. And then that, uh, to protect the commission, that you all have relied on the information that's being provided. And, uh, if anything proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, the approval sheet may be modified. So those are our four standard conditions.
So we have that written down somewhere?
They are, they were in his comments. So, um, I would make an amendment to include the four standard stipulations of the, uh, of this, of the sediment erosion control, uh, um, requirements.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Henrik to add in the stipulations as presented in Mr. Hibansky's communication to us. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti, uh, any remarks on the amendment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Um, any final, final other stipulation, anything else on the sediment and erosion control aside from what was included in that amendment? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Um, item seven, I'm actually going to give you something for this one. Item seven, just to make all members aware, you should have gotten a note from Sismita, who's our town planner. Um, I wear a second hat here as a member of the Stratford Housing Partnership. Um, we are statutorily mandated by the state of Connecticut to adopt a housing plan. Um, there is going to be a joint meeting of the land use commissions, most likely with the town council on March 11th, which is a Thursday. Uh, you should be getting official notification of that soon enough. Uh, there's a number of items that, uh, we talk about some of the strategies that we might adopt in order to move forward with even as, as well with an eye toward, uh, um, mitigating our exposure under eight dash three G, uh, that we'll be discussing. Um, the who actually approves the plan is still being worked out with the attorneys. It may actually come before us. So, uh, if you can mark your calendars for that date, I'd appreciate, uh, if members could be there so that, uh, should this come before us, we're, um, you're well informed and, um, any material, uh, suggestions you have as to what should be in that plan. Um, you know, we can entertain it when the housing partnership, uh, reconvenes after the joint meeting. So please add that to your calendars, um, if you could. And, uh, watch for any emails from Sismita, uh, our town planner. Um, anything else, Mr. Hibansky on planning?
Well, I'll be brief as I'm going on hour seven of Zoom and go to meeting calls today. So,
Wow.
Yeah, we are, we're, uh, so Sismita and I had a brief conversation. Uh, she is going to be, uh, taking the lead on the plan of conservation and development, uh, rewrite that's coming up, coming due in two years from now. And, um, you know, I, I had applied for CIP funds with the, with the town and for a, not only for the plan of conservation and development rewrite, but also for a rewrite of the zoning regulations. And we're kind of game planning sequencing and I think the plan for the moment, and I wanted to kind of, uh, hold the commission and you don't have to answer tonight, but our initial thought was to maybe, uh, the end of this year, begin our plan of conservation process. Uh, and maybe six months into it, once we are starting to get some guidelines on development, are there certain corridors that we're prioritizing with design guidelines or maybe form-based codes? Then we have, we, we can embark on the zoning regulations, um, the zoning rec relight, rewrite, which is going to be a big task. Uh, and so we were hoping to kind of stagger them so that we have information to guide the regulations. I just wanted to present that informally tonight and we could talk about it in more detail further unless you all have comments.
Yeah, I would just add, that is a big deal. I said it on the last one. Um, I know, I'm trying to remember who was on that one. I know John Zabel, former planning chairman was on there. Oh boy, I can't even remember who else. I think, uh, former councilman Cubic, Joe Cubic was on there. It, it's a fairly heavy, intense effort. Um, but it could really use, um, you know, the insight of members, uh, who have sat on zoning either presently or formerly. So, um, when they go to establish that group, um, that's, that's quite a, a large task. I'll give you that.
Put new, put new zoning regulations on top of that.
And put that on top of that, yeah. I will-
Talking about rewriting for 20 years.
Yeah. I'd want to redo the liquor regulation too.
No.
Okay.
Great opportunity to kind of sharpen our pencil here. So we're looking forward to it.
Okay. Any goal setting, SEEP recommendations, POCD, we already talked about that, TOD. Any other items before the commission? Mr. Hibansky.
Uh, I, I know I sent out an item late and I, I didn't hear from, from anybody other than I think maybe some acknowledgement that was received for an administrative item that is not on the agenda. Um, it would be an administrative consideration for this, um, you know, clothing recycling, household recycling station in Station House Square. If you all would rather discuss it next month, that's totally fine with me. I thought I would just remind everyone since we're getting to the tail end and it's been a long meeting. So.
Um, yeah, I, I think, um, I don't believe it's time sensitive, uh, Mr. Hibansky. Um, so I think let's, let's let it sit on the agenda for our next meeting unless anybody feels a compelling need to move on it tonight.
I don't, but since we have the, um, uh, availability of, of our, not only one of our alternates, but our light officer, I'd like perhaps to get his comments on how some of these other bins have been a plus or a, a minus to our town. So.
I think that would be great input for, for next month.
I don't know if you can hear me, Rich, but you got to, uh-
If you're the commissioner for that, you've been warned.
Loud and clear, we will discuss it, uh, within the next month.
Appreciate it.
I'm prepared.
Okay. So next meeting is March, uh, 24th, unless we need the March 10th meeting. I'm not foreseeing that, but we will let you know. And as I said, keep, uh, March 11th open on your, um, on your calendars. And maybe, maybe soon we'll be able to get back to being in person, uh, sometime this year. That'd be nice.
Yeah.
We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mr. Francis, second. Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We're adjourned at nine forty-two PM. Have a good evening, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.